I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? For a second time, is there anyone that would like to address the board? For a third and final time, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none, the public portion is closed at 6:02. We are, I would like to entertain a motion to move the, celebrate the community Bailey Student Artwork portion of the program to next on our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Perfect. We will now move on to the Bailey Student Artwork presentation and the student representatives will go after that.
So first of all, we have three presentations tonight. One is regarding the Bailey artwork. We're going to do that first. We also have our benchmark presentation, which is our new reading program. And then we have Melanie Denner, who's going to give an update on our kindergarten registration. But the first one has got me the most excited. I have to tell you that, you know, when we get a chance to showcase our students and be able to show you the good things and the good work that we do, it is really the best part of my job. I never get tired of it, whether it's watching kids compete on the field or, you know, in the auditorium, on the stage, or in this case, their artwork. It's absolutely tremendous. It blows me away. And as far as I'm concerned, there's nothing our kids can't do. So with that, what happened this year was Bailey did a contest to draw the front and the back cover of the yearbook. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Drynn so she can explain what the rules were, what it's had to do.
Lots of kids turned in artwork and it was about community and coming together and school and promoting growth, right, for our community. There were so many wonderful pictures to choose from, right? It was just going to be the front cover, but we chose to do the front and the back in the yearbook. And Mrs. Alawa is the head of the yearbook committee. They really just blew us away and they did a phenomenal job and it was boasted online, some of the pictures and representing some of the different things throughout our community that make West Haven great, so.
That was actually telling, so they went viral and a lot of the board members got to see them and they said, you know, you've got to do something to showcase these kids. So we're really very honored that the three of you are here tonight. And could ask Mayor Bor to come up because I know she has a certificate as well. And I'm going to ask when we, when we hand out the people who you represented on this picture, some of them are here tonight. So we're going to ask that when we call them up to receive a framed copy of the picture, we're going to ask you to, we're going to let you hand it to them since it's your room, okay? So the, what's up? We do have a communication director.
I should have mentioned, Mr. Rob Borleo started last week. Obviously, what year, 2000?
Yes.
From West Haven High.
Well, I know from West Haven High School. He didn't get the job because he played hockey with my son. He actually is a really skilled at social media and is a marketing, was a marketing major at University of New Haven and he earned his degree last year.
He was my student at the University of New Haven.
I remember we used to tie Robbie's skates in the Bennett Rink. So we go back a way. So the front cover winner was Reese Robinson.
Superintendent Cavallaro, if it's okay with you, I see our police chief here and he's representing the city as well. Do you mind?
No, not at all. I love that Chief Purno come up. I know he likes, he told me, he specifically said though, he was going in the back.
But he can't hide.
We did have one board objection over there.
Stand with you too. So we want to congratulate you. It's beautiful. And we are actually making a, just so you all know, we're actually making a large size one of this and a large size one of this. And they're going to be featured in City Hall. So happy to have this talent in our city. Good job.
And the back cover winners.
Want to picture right now?
Sorry, the front is a, is the great picture of the school. And the back, all the community highlights of our, of our community. So the back cover winner was Margarita Buren.
Just so happens, I'm sorry. We also did a mayor of the day contest, which we will come back and talk about, but just so happens Margarita was the mayor. Last week she took my place and she was running the city. Yay.
Ms. Sanwar Sarey is her, I guess, co-illustrator.
Both of you, from Ozzy, congratulations. Very excited.
So if you guys want to put down, because we're going to ask you, I'm going to call up the individual businesses and places.
You guys want to take one photo real quick?
I'm going to go on that side, someone out the way.
So the businesses that were represented, and I'm not sure, I know some people actually confirmed, but I don't know everyone who's coming, Duffy's Tavern. Is there anybody here from Duffy's? Okay. We will obviously get them their photograph. Sue Parties was actually, was also featured. I know Bob Nugent from.
Thank you very much. This is fantastic and we'll hang proudly in the bowling alley.
Teddy and Archelle. Chief Purno is here from the West Haven Police Department. Mayor Bor will accept the city hall. Dunkin' Donuts, I'm not sure which one. We have a bunch of Dunkin'. I don't think we can survive in West Haven.
West Haven runs on Dunkin'.
Right? Dr. Becky Rhodes from the VA was supposed to be here today. Thank you. And is Colleen Braille here? Colleen, thank you for coming. Yeah, we're really very proud of our students and, you know, thank you so much for getting them here tonight. Thank you so much for the work that you do. And I know we're going to be seeing big things from you as you move up onto West Haven High School. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Would you like one? Did you guys, did you guys get, you guys got your framed copy, right? I think we're going to take a five minute recess and, you know, certainly welcome, you're welcome to stay for the meeting, everyone is. And Rob will take some pictures. We have some very light refreshments outside. Thank you all for coming tonight.
It's just the beginning. We have still more to go, but.
Like to get our guests in and out.
Appreciate that.
Such a positive impact on our kids that they do in the art. Thank you guys so much. Chief, you almost got beaned by your kid, but thank you.
Thanks for letting you come up. There's some delicious cookies out and coffee and flavored, Meg's feet flavored waters out there if anybody wants to grab something. See him out so.
I put water.
I was hoping I was going to see a Seahawks jersey in there somewhere, but.
Be at some kind of athlete.
They did have the Bailey shirt and the class of 2024. My favorite. Cookies aren't going to eat themselves. Maybe, they might be gone. They look good. They had all.
I like, no, but yes, she is. I like the honesty.
When I saw it on Facebook, I was like.
Yeah, like we got more calls on this.
That was so cool. All right, we're good to start. We will move to the student representative reports.
Hi, everybody. To start off, I hope everyone is doing well today. Spring sports are, once again, started and they're doing great even in this great weather outside. And from what I've heard, the Adams Family Play was amazing, which I know that Heather and Kimberly are very, very, probably going to talk about in a minute. And Jen actually went to go watch it, so let her talk about that.
I did attend on that Friday and I thought it was really well, like the backdrop and the actresses and the actors, especially, I think her name is Paige, who was Wednesday. I thought she did really, really well. Oh, she. There were some complications, but they ran really smoothly in overall.
On April 10th at 7:00 PM, there will be an evening of jazz concert at the West Haven High School, I think, with the Bailey Band. So we both schools working together and I'm sure it's probably going to be amazing as well because our arts are often performing really well. And pre- advocate interviews have begun and they're going pretty well from what I've heard. Junior prom will be on the 25th of April. And if you guys are interested in any other future events, there's a calendar online for West Haven High School and a lot of the schools, I think all the schools in West Haven. That's all for me today. And I hope everyone has a great break.
Thank you. All right, moving back to administration status of schools. I didn't know if you had anything or you just wanted to move right into the present.
You know what, just, you know, the mayor released her budget. We are working towards a number. We're talking to get there. There won't be any, as I mentioned at the public hearing, I'm not worried about layoffs. And again, the point that I tried to raise and you and I talked a lot about this and I think reiterated it as well at the public hearing is, you know, you can cut here and there, you can do a few things. I think it's a bigger, there are bigger issues, many of which are out of our control. Now, the good news is I received a communication from CAPS today. And there is legislation right now pending for special education, which I think can help us down the road. So that's a good thing. And so those are the kinds of things, the big changes that are going to help us as a district. Again, could you kind of, a secretary or a custodian, yeah, you can do that and you can nickel and dime, but that's not going to help us in the long run maintain what we, what we want to be able to deliver to our families in this district. So as I, as I said at the public hearing the other day, just continue to monitor it. Any, anytime you get to see a legislator, get in your ear and, you know, ask them what the status of some of, some of the education bills are. And again, we're going to be okay this year. You know, my concern again, as I mentioned, was, you know, two, three, four, five years down the road. I'm sorry.
While you're talking about that, I thought I'd take a screenshot of it, but I didn't. Our date for the council interview, for lack of a better word, is what?
Yeah, they actually changed it. It was originally the 24th. It is now April 23rd at 6:30. Buddy who's here. Try to get some people there.
Okay.
Thank you for mentioning that.
No problem.
That's all I have.
Judy, did you have anything else?
Well, I would like to accept our benchmark.
Go right ahead.
No, we're going to do the kindergarten.
Oh, kindergarten register.
It'll be quick. I want to kind of save benchmark for last. So, you know, Melanie is here. I know it's, you know, I've been asking, several of you have asked for updates as far as where our kindergarten registration. Do you want me to, do you want me to steal your thunder and tell them that, you know, you did, we had, we, we sent it out today to the board members, the enrollment projection. Melanie was only 11 off, so she did a.
Might have been an English teacher, but my math is pretty good.
No, hold on.
Okay, I'm like.
When are we going to get? I was just about to say, mental note, can we talk to?
They are, you know what, I'll get an update. I actually saw Jeff Taglia, Taglia Tele today, but I thought they were ordered and they're on the way. Now, I don't know what it takes or if it's the installation is a big deal.
See that. If anybody wants to move to the front row and so you can see the presentation, please feel free. Thank you. There you go.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, he did tell me two buttons and I still forgot them. Do you want to see here? Someone out of your way.
So kindergarten registration this year, we did have each building hosted one day at their building. Washington obviously isn't quite there yet, so we held that at the Elks Lodge and they were gracious enough to donate their space for the day. On May 7th, and you are all welcome, all of the elementary schools will host kindergarten orientations, the chance to see the entire building. It is a professional development day, so none of the other students are there, but the entire staff is there. So it's really their first opportunity to see the entire building on their own, get excited for kindergarten, meet the principal, meet the staff, see their classrooms. And at the same time, they get all that student specific, I'm sorry, school specific information. During kindergarten registration, it is quite the overhaul. And we're, we have quite the amount of stuff. You could ask the custodians, they have to move it from place to place. But we do give the pre-last assessment. It's just a little dip into what those students are able to do. This way the teachers are able to do those class lists and kind of make them cuter genius for, for next year as best they can. We have computers there. We have staff to help them with the computers. If they didn't do their power school forms, any parent knows, sometimes those forms aren't always user friendly. So we have somebody there to help them through that. We have tutors and teachers there to help with translation. We also give each kindergartner a little goodie bag to go, has some flashcards. And it has some helpful hints for parents to get them ready for kindergarten. We usually have our community resources there. Family Resource Center is there, giving out information about before and after school, community house, we have school readiness information. And anything that a parent might need or unaware of in our community that could help them. So this is what Neil was talking about, my crazy math, and it looks way more than this. So every year during kindergarten registration, I take that data and as the months go on, I'm able to showcase kind of where our projections are and how much we're increasing or decreasing. Usually it's increase. October 1 is when we report to the state our enrollment numbers. So I've, over the past four years, the fourth year I've done it, I'm able to give a projection of what by school that number will look like in October. So if you follow all of this, and again, it looks crazier than this, this is the watered down version. I'm able to give those projections. Sorry, it's a little busy. By school, again, 67% of our kids come through kindergarten registration and the other ones come through summer. But depending on the school, that percentage changes. So this way we're able to accurately predict what those class sizes will look like.
Melanie, those number of people that showed up the day you did registration, 46, 63.
Yes, so these are the numbers of anyone who is already registered or going to be registered. So we have appointments, we have another, this upcoming Saturday, and here in the lobby, we have a kindergarten registration. And then again, on May 1st at McRill, just to get that one last push before orientation. So that's inclusive of anyone still attending.
Melanie, what's the enrollment at Savon Rock Kindergarten last year?
For kindergarten registration? It was very low. We were at 36. I think that's an actual.
So your projection of 110, does that present an issue with space or?
You know, you know what, let me, Melanie and I actually talked today. Some are, are much lower than others and we talked about where we think we may be able to eliminate and or move. We're not doing anything now.
Okay.
We'd rather wait and see what final numbers look like.
Okay.
If we have to move some people or take a kindergarten out of one school and move it to another, we'd rather have those options available than to eliminate it now, for example, and next thing you know, the registration goes off the charts.
It'll be at Malloy. Yep. Yeah, so Washington orientation, in case anyone was wondering, it'll be at Malloy temporarily until next year. So yeah, it's just like what Neil was saying, and we take a look at that. I did think that number was a little high, but using my calculations and obviously it changes for every time we have a registration as the weeks go on, days go on. And we have our early kindergarten entry. That's also something that is the second year in a row that we've had to follow through with this Public Act 23208. Any child who is born September 1st through December 31st, a parent can request the waiver to have their child assessed to determine whether or not they're developmentally appropriate to attend kindergarten. So we have been going through this process again. We were able to start that in very early February with our schools and thank you to my school teams because they have been testing and they keep getting emails from me. I had another parent complete all the requests. You know, if you can call them and make that appointment. So this way we know that those kids can, they're either developmentally appropriate to come in, they're attending our registration, they're attending orientation. We know that they are coming or we know that they are not. And that I have to take that next step in sending a parent or having a conversation with them about what a next step for them could be. We are continuing to use the Brigance. It has five different domains per the state legislation and that guidance. We're trying to assess whether or not a child in multiple areas is developmentally appropriate. It gives us an age equivalency and we are looking at a child based on their age, not in comparison to a five-year-old, because that would be unfair. The parent gets a report. They get it pretty quickly. Once that report is submitted through database. This is overall so far this year. And again, the program, the database gives us this data where you can see who's within normal limits. It's kind of your perfect little bell curve here, 51.7%. We also have below delays cutoff and above gifted. We have a 90% entry rate. We've tested 56 students so far this year. I have 10 that are still, the parents are just getting me those last bits of paper. Last year we tested 110, I think, students. And I'm predicting to do about the same this year. But I think that we're in a better position because we started earlier. So with the parent's permission, I'm able to showcase this young child. This was Jeremiah who tested into kindergarten this year. He is a December 20th birthday. He is currently attending a preschool program, one of our community preschool programs. And you can see that academically, his language development, his physical development, self-help skills, social emotional. Jeremiah is ready for kindergarten. So it's able to showcase in a very data-driven way who is and who is not ready. I will also say, both of his parents are Westie alumnis. Okay, I told, I told Neil I'd be quick. So next steps is really looking at our pre-K programming. I'm sure that you've heard about universal pre-K potentially coming to the house as a bill and what that really means. So the Office of Early Childhood has taken a lot of steps towards adjusting everything in preparation for that. And I do think that this is going to be a multi-years process. We don't have the municipalities, we don't have the funding, we don't have the staff. So they're starting to take these steps. So we as a district are going to respond to that by doing the following. Over the course of the next year, we are going to look at becoming NIAC accredited. We don't have to be NIAC accredited currently as a Board of Ed, but if we are, then we are eligible for that funding through Early Start Connecticut. And that's where we would like to go with it. So that we are adjusting our pre-K program based on our community needs and looking at what the state is, their expectation is.
What does that entail? How do you get NIAC accredited?
So it is a process. People from NIAC will come and review. A lot of it has to do with facilities. So we're really focusing on Washington to start because it's a brand new building. So, and they have streamlined some of that process. It's already paid through an endowment to ACES, so we will have their assistance to help us modify anything that has to get done. There are certain professional developments that the teachers will have to go through. There are certain expectations in terms of board policies, which we already have. And.
There's standards that we have to meet.
And there are standards that we have to meet. Yeah, so it's a, it's really a monitoring checklist that they'll come in and do.
And the community ones have to go through that.
Yes, our community, so West Haven Child Development Center, Kids Club, all, they are all NIAC accredited, so they went through this. So it's, I think it's something that we can do and it's perfectly obtainable in all of our.
We actually, we actually went through it. When the community house went to Malloy, we, we had to go through NIAC accreditation. Believe it or not, they look under the sink to check the pipes and all things like that to make sure that it's basically safe.
It's not as bad as the high school.
No, also went through that. Yeah, that's okay.
I just wondered.
So it will be a process, but I think that we're perfectly capable of doing that. And I think it would be good for our community. It'll be good for our pre-K. Be great for our students. Our projected numbers are only increasing for pre-K and especially if this comes through the house and is accepted, that will only kind of exacerbate the need of expanding our program. And speaking of, we will be opening a pre-K classroom at Washington. This will be an additional classroom, so this will be our 10th public preschool classroom. And that's it.
Yes. When you told them the registrations at the school?
Yes.
Do the teachers get, the kindergarten teacher, are they there and they get a sub that day? How does that work?
So depending on the school, they do, the principals try to release them so that they can go do some observations, meet the parents. Some teachers will take notes while the child's doing the pre-last assessment. And some of them are just coming and they'll just walk through the CAF. They'll come during their free time. They want to know, oh, I have some people here from the buildings, they want to know who's coming and they want to be able to reach them now.
So the kindergarten teachers aren't necessarily there?
No.
But, so who does, who's doing all the testing?
So we have our reading specialists who do it. So we have our reading specialists who do it, um, and our EL staff to do it.
But they're from the school.
Yes, they're from the school. So it's the staff from those buildings.
Unless you need a bilingual and there was not a bilingual teacher.
Yeah.
Like a problem.
Yeah.
No, I just didn't know if the kindergarten teachers got to meet them that day or not. That's why I was.
Sometimes they do. I will say it's, it's kind of sporadic when they can be released from their classroom. So one of the buildings had a sub for the day so that each teacher had some time where they can come out.
Years ago, we used to give the kindergartners the day off. However, yeah, I know you were thinking that. But but kindergarten, uh, kindergartners have to go the hundred eighty days. They are mandated.
So there's none of those, none of that anymore.
No.
So it makes, makes too much sense to get.
I just thought it would be nice if the kindergarten teachers were there to meet them.
During the orientation, they do get to meet the students when they come in.
I understand that, but you know, when you, you meet them for the first time that I've had kids who just bounce into kindergarten loving every minute and I'm like, you know, hang by the door. So you, you try to ease them into it. There, but I understand that it's not always possible.
So I can't believe it's been twenty years since I went to kindergarten registrations. But as a mom of a November baby, do we, do we mention to the parents during this early, potential early registration that it's not just kindergarten, that you're going to send your kid to college when they're seventeen? Because that's what held me back. She was ready for kindergarten, but I could not imagine her going away to college at seventeen.
I agree with that. Because when I'm on the other side, I started my daughter. She's December fourteenth. I mean, she's like at the end. I started her and when we got to those more formative years, I regretted it. Because of her.
I mean, it's still their option, obviously, to go through the testing, but it just might be a good talking point because I think they could certainly call me. It was, it was the best thing I ever did keeping her back.
When I was an elementary school principal, that was, I used to have that conversation all the time and I know a lot of our principals do. In fact, I use myself as an example. My birthday is December thirtieth. So I, so I just made it. Um, yeah, uh, the, the reality of it is though, it's a lot of times it's daycare.
Yeah. Rita Pepe is the one that asked me that. Are you comfortable with sending her to college at seventeen? And I'm absolutely not. We're not coming to kindergarten.
I mean, I think you raise a great point though, because a lot of the conversation is not only, not only are they going to college at seventeen, but when they're in high school and they're competing academically, you know, uh, you know, smart kids, uh, for valedictorians, you know, kids who are more mature tend to do better. Um, you know, uh, you know, now.
But sports wise too.
I was gonna say sports wise. Nineteen eighty, I always think we're nineteen eighty baseball and hockey team that won the the um, state championships. We had kids, the old CIAC rule was as long as you turned nineteen after September first. We had two or three nineteen year old kids on that team. At both teams that, and that, that made a huge difference. And you know, we were successful. So it, it really does matter. And in the scheme of things, you're so much better off graduating. What's the difference eighteen or nineteen as opposed to seventeen? It just gives you that upper leg when you go away.
It's hard enough to send them off at eighteen. I don't know.
But even, even it, it, it helps you.
Yeah.
Get in high school to get to the next step.
I remember Mrs. Cluth saying, are you sure? It'll listen, but.
Me, you should have listened.
I know.
Listen, so hard babies, you can tell you know.
Oh, they're great points. It, it really is, but it's hard because I, again, it comes down.
It's a struggle for some parents who like.
It comes down to daycare. That's the issue.
There are some kids that are ready and I think that that's why this Brigance program is so effective because it does illustrate to you not only academically, but socially are you. It gives you a pretty quantifiable answer as to whether or not your child is ready.
Yeah.
And sometimes it may be hard for a parent to see that. But to everyone's point that has birth babies, sometimes it's in their benefit to start early and sometimes maybe get, looking at that information is helpful. So I think it's great that we have that option, that it's not really.
Bigger picture question, like it's not. It's not kindergarten.
You guys are exactly right. Make, make great.
I, you know, yeah, I heard Mrs. Cluth's voice as she was getting, as my daughter, who did great. Loved her time at the high school in Bailey. But I like, wow, I see the difference now. Then I didn't because she had had two years of preschool, but it's, and now she's doing great.
But a lot of times it, Heather, to your point, it doesn't show up when they're in kindergarten.
Yep.
It shows up as other kids mature over them.
Yep, yeah.
As, as they get older.
I am finding a lot of parents telling me like, oh, I'm not sending them this year. I, I mean, as I'm talking to parents and there are some parents, just like Neil said, like this, it, it kindergarten is not daycare, but it is your childcare plan. So when that plan gets swept away from you, now you're stuck. And I think that's why we are responding with expanding what we can do both as a community and within our, in our public pre-Ks.
Thanks, Melanie.
Thank you.
Best job.
We have another presentation.
We have another presentation.
Before you go back in at the walk.
You should sit over here.
Judy, um, Judy will uh, introduce. First of all, before I uh, turn it over to Judy, I want to thank all of the teachers from our school district. Gave up an evening tonight to be here. That means a lot to us. Thank you so much.
So anyways, um, last year we went through the process of looking into a new program that was mandated. Uh, we looked at the seven programs the state wanted us to do. Collette was here last spring to introduce you to Benchmark. Benchmark was our choice because it met all the needs of our students, um, high needs as well as our general education. So we've been working with Benchmark now for about seven, eight months. We've had professional development, which has been very successful. Um, implementation has been really wonderful. I can tell you, even going into some of the classrooms here of the staff that I've seen some really amazing and great things going on with the program. Um, the kids are excited and I, I think it was a, a good choice. So right now we're going to share with you how we're doing, um, some updates. We have staff here that are going to share their experience with Benchmark. And of course we have Margie Sullivan, who's from Benchmark Education. Dana will take over. We have Kara Patterson from um, second grade. I've been in her room. Great job. Jennifer Field from Carrigan, Megan Abey, our EL representative from Washington, Maria Burton, our assistant principal. Um, Lauren Break Lake, a reading consultant from Carrigan and Jessica Stutzman, our reading consultant from Washington. So I'm going to turn it over to Dana, who's going to go over.
Thank you so much. So tonight is going to be kind of a high level overview, um, just some program highlights and some data highlights. So if any of you want more information, um, or more data, I'm certainly happy to share that with you either at a committee meeting or individually, just reach out to me and we can do that. Um, I of course would like to thank everyone for joining us here tonight. If I could just have my reading team stand up for just a minute to acknowledge them. This team has done such an incredible job this year. This has been a great implementation, but it's been a very heavy lift at the school level. And those are the folks who, um, you know, are really in the schools every day. Those are the people that the teachers are going to. Uh, Megan Abey, who's over on this side, has been doing all that lifting for the EL team. So thank you to Megan. Thank you to Margie for coming down from New York today. And then I do have two classroom teachers here, Jennifer and Kara, if you could stand up. I invited Jennifer and Kara is because when I'm looking at data and you know, we're a data driven district. Um, their data has been really off the charts all year. Um, what I'm going to show you today is percent growth. How each grade and how each school has grown since our first unit in September. Um, now being, you know, about eight tenths of the way through the year. But their data has been consistently outstanding since the very first assessment. So what I wanted to do was have them share a little bit about their experience with the benchmark program and talk about how they're able to achieve that success in their classroom. And what's different about the benchmark assessments, um, than what we're used to is it, it's all standardized, it's all grade level. So we're talking about this outstanding data. We're not talking about outstanding data on some assessment that we've created. This is grade level standardized assessment. So that's just fairly impressive. And every time I look at their data, I'm just wowed by what they've been able to do in such a short amount of time. So some program highlights and this first one, you've been hearing me talk about since the beginning of the year because it's my favorite part of Benchmark. And that's the consistent knowledge strands from grades K to six. So it builds every year, but every student in every building is learning about the exact same knowledge strand. So a parent who has children in different grades in the home, those kids are learning about the same topic, about the same knowledge strand. A school, everyone is learning about the same topic and the same knowledge strand, which means that we can create a community of learners within that school, which I think is so important. I talked to a little bit about, you know, the posters we created that say, you know, at Washington School, we wonder and they list the essential questions for those knowledge strands. And just having that community of learners and being able to build that community of learners, I think really makes a difference. Um, when uh, we're talking about their ability to advance to that next grade. Embedded and scaffolded essential questions. So within that knowledge strand, each knowledge strand has an essential question. So for example, in unit three, if you're in kindergarten, your essential question might be, why do we have rules? Whereas in sixth grade, your essential question might be, why do new governments form? So there's that, that jump between kindergarten and sixth grade, but it's still that question about rules and how rules govern our society. Um, the mirrored companion products are something that have been so important to us this year and it's really one of the main reasons we went with the Benchmark program. And when I talk about mirrored, mirrored companion products or companion programs, we're talking about um, the steps to advance and express. The steps to advance is the companion program that's being used for our inclusion teachers and in our labs. And the express is what's being used with our ELL, EL teachers. So because we have those mirrored products and those mirrored programs, students in those classrooms are able to be front loaded with information. So that way, when they're in their classroom setting, they already have some background knowledge. So when a teacher gives a tricky word, that EL student or that special education student that maybe is used to struggling can raise their hand and say, hey, I know something about that. I know that vocabulary word. And I think not only is that good for classroom discussion, but it really gives that student that additional boost of confidence, just having that front loaded information that we weren't able to do before. The students in our labs, maybe who are only getting an express or only getting STA curriculum, they're still getting those same knowledge strands. So no matter where you fall in the academic spectrum, you are getting that same knowledge strand as everyone else in your grade level, which is so important. Benchmark is science of reading based. And as you know, that is, you know, all the, all the talk right now is that it's research based, based on the science of reading, based on how the brain learns and how the brain accomplishes reading. Um, it has a balanced literacy approach. Uh, if you've been around a long time, I'm sure you've heard the whole language, whole word versus phonics debate. And this encompasses both, which is so important. It has embedded ELD supports, so English language development. So for our teachers who have a high number of EL students in their classroom, which is many of our schools, each lesson has those embedded ELD supports. So they can include those within the lesson. So in addition to an EL student getting support from the EL teacher, those supports are embedded in each lesson. And it has family engagement activities. So prior to every unit, we're able to send home family engagement activities in six different languages, which are the languages Benchmark provides. And that way you can, you know, do those extension activities with your students at home, work on those vocabulary. As I said, if you have multiple students in the district in different grades, they're working on the same knowledge strands. So you can have your, your children working together on those family activities. I think it's so important that we engage those families in what we're doing in the classroom. Um, and sometimes people respond to me, which I always think is nice because I send them out from my email and people respond to me and tell me, you know, what they did with their kids that was an extension activity. Um, and I think that's great that those parents are, are kind of engaging in that way. So because of all these things, uh, we've had some really good data. So these are our percent increases from unit one to unit four, because unit four is the halfway point for us. Um, we have eight units. So for, um, as you can see, Carrigan, the, the most, a forty percent increase for our unit one assessment to our unit four assessment. Um, our lowest being twelve percent, which is still a really good percent increase. That's broken down by school and here you see it broken down by grade level. So we, you don't see a kindergarten breakdown and that's because many of our kindergartners are still taking it paper pencil. Next year, um, we're going to change things a little bit. So that's still inputted into the system. Um, but the data wasn't exactly accurate because of it not all being in there. So we left that off. But between grades one and six, every single grade um, without exception, has at least a ten percent increase. And again, some really big jumps in the upper grades. And we were a little nervous about our upper grade data to start the year because there was a lot of backfilling to get students to that grade level material. Um, but we're doing it, as you can see in our data. The K and one data, um, part of the reason it's a little bit lower, the percent change, it's because it's been consistently good since the beginning of the year. Um, and that's normally where you have the most work to do. You know, you're starting out with those letters and sounds, the concepts of print, phonemic awareness. Uh, but as we're looking at the data, it's really been consistently good, about eighty percent proficiency across the board in K and one. So we're excited to see what that's going to mean for next year. Um, next year, we're going to have grades of students who have seen this previously and we think that's really going to give our kids a leg up. Each year they do something called the launch unit where they learn the routines for each of um, the units in Benchmark. And now we're going to be going into it with all of those kids having already had that experience once. So we expect that this is going to look even better for next year. Um, now turn it over to uh, the stars of the show, the teachers. So I'm going to welcome up Kara first. Kara, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Dan, thank you Dana for that nice introduction. Um, I teach second grade at Savin Rock and I think my students are excelling in the curriculum, particularly for a couple of reasons. One being that we start the first twenty days of school with a launch unit and during that unit, they are building a strong foundation of the procedures, the routines and the roles that they're going to be interchanging from unit one through unit ten. Some of those roles that they are acting in are speaker, listener, scribe, a facilitator, facilitator, to name a few. And I think the launch unit is great because it puts an emphasis on the listener role. And it's teaching them that there's more to listening than just hearing. And they're actively showing that with their body language and they're building upon each other's ideas. And I've seen that in the classroom now that we're in unit seven. Um, I think that they're feeling more confident because they've had that twenty days of practice and that routine is repetitive. Another part of the curriculum they're doing pretty well with is the structure. It lends itself to a lot of teacher led modeling, um, initially where the students are just observing. While I am modeling, I may be like, I may be verbalizing my thought process as I'm reading a text. I'm annotating the text. I'm discovering the key details and the text evidence and showing my thought process, asking those before reading questions and those after reading questions. And as I walk around the room, they're more naturally annotating the text independently now. I see them using same similar vocabulary and some of the sentence starters that I have framed for them. Um, and lastly, because I teach second grade, um, at times, we can struggle with like captivating our younger learners and keeping their attention because their stand is a little bit smaller. Um, but because the benchmark curriculum has magazines and these magazines are vibrant. They have all of the texts that we will interact with for each unit and they coincide with unit one through ten. Um, it keeps my students more engaged and they're focused on the material.
Benchmark uses that gradual release model that I do, we do, you do, which has been really great for our students being able to see that modeling through the mentor texts. Kara mentioned the magazines. The students love the magazines. It was a bit of a challenge at the beginning of the year convincing teachers to allow the students to write in the magazines. I'm like, I absolutely promise we are getting new ones every single year. Teachers like to hoard. But that's been great that the, the students can own the magazines. They can bring them home at the end of the unit. And as Kara said, annotating is such a huge part of that so that they're actively reading. Um, Jennifer, come on up.
Hi, everyone. Um, so I am, I teach fifth grade at Carrigan. And one of the things, so I was able this summer, I finished my sixth year and I had a last course, um, that kind of gave me an open platform to do whatever I wanted and I chose Benchmark. So I had a log a hundred hours this summer on that choice. So that gave me um, a kind of a leg up going into it. I really kind of think I understood the program at least, at least the first three units of it. Um, especially with the planning because I thought planning, um, was one of the main points that is made. Um, it's pretty successful, I feel, in my classroom, having the lessons planned out, the slides up and ready. It was a very consistent flow through all the lessons. Um, being at Carrigan, one of the most important things that I found is that since we have that switch model, I'm actually allowed to teach the lesson twice. Um, so I can make immediate changes in how it went with my first class to my second class. Whether it be the scaffolds that I've put in place for my students, the way I present the information, what I'm asking back from them. If for some reason I did not think it went well with my first class, I can change it immediately. I don't have to wait that whole year to kind of teach it again. And I, and I kind of go back and forth between which class gets the lesson first. Um, and I also, at the end of every day or every couple of days, I just jot notes to myself in this little notebook about what I can do next year, you know, constantly. I think it really allows for constant reflection. Um, even just the littlest things. We just read a story the other day, um, an excerpt from Call the Wild. And I just jotted down quick, um, you know, build a background knowledge on sled dogs in Alaska for me next year because I felt that that was a little bit of a weakness, that they, they didn't understand that. Um, so just making sure that I'm constantly reflecting on how the lessons are going, where they're struggling, where I can improve my teaching, uh, things like that. And um, another huge success that I've seen, which I didn't. And another huge success that I've seen, which I didn't, in all the planning that I did, I couldn't foresee this. I didn't see it myself, but my students are making huge connections between the text. I know we touched upon how they kind of build upon each other, but the way that they are not only like retaining the information that they're learning, but the extent that they're understanding the content is huge. Something that stood out to me of an example was, I think it was unit five, we read a text. It was a poem by Maya Angelou, Cage Bird, and we were going over it, we were annotating it, they were kind of understanding the meaning behind her stanzas. And one of my students, she raised her hand and she said, her outlook on our country is just like Thurgood Marshall. And I said, well, where did you, you know, where's that from? And it was from unit three. We had read a Thurgood Marshall speech. And she connected those ideas. And when I was planning, I didn't even see that connection. And I said, well, where did you see that? And so just their retaining this more than I, the content of it more than I really thought that they would. So for me, in my classroom, I would say the three main things that I feel that have made it a success is the planning, the reflecting, and just using the resources, making sure that we're using the resources that Benchmark provides. I try to, they overwhelm us with the idea of like anchor charts and things like that, and they change unit to unit. But there are some that have been consistently up on my walls that the kids reference without even knowing. It is just there and they use it. So making sure that we are really understanding all the things that Benchmark has to give us, but that's.
And an absolute rock star over at Washington, where I think the EL population is up to fifty percent now, and Megan's data has been incredible.
Hi, everyone. So it's not just me, certainly our whole team at Washington, and of course, in all the schools. But we do have a very high EL population, and this year utilizing Benchmark, we've seen success almost immediately. And with that, it was the way that Dana shared before about that mirroring companion, express is that. And our students are able to hear things either with us first, kind of depending on their schedule, and then in their classrooms, or reverse, they'll hear it in their room first and then come to us. And that's the best because they already come, A, with that background knowledge, but B, they're excited because they can participate in the conversation. And with our EL students, sometimes just that speaking and listening component alone is what we work on for a lot of the lessons. But they're coming already, ready to do that. They're excited, they're engaged, they're asking more questions. And so it's just leading to them almost taking charge of their own learning in that way. We're still sticking to the lessons, but they're excited about it. And they have that knowledge already. Of course, we work on their reading and the writing as well, but they do that in their classrooms too, and they come into our room, and it's just an extension of that. They're a smaller group, so it gives them a little bit more individualized attention with that, to also work on their skills too. And then the scaffolding, because they come to us at many different levels. And so Benchmark does provide a more intense kind of scaffolding and leading, and then more of an enrichment concept too. And each lesson for the teacher, we're able to give that. So we're able to talk to our groups and meet their needs in that way, depending on their level of language acquisition that they have. And then another thing we noticed too was the assessments for both express and the advanced really mirror our last links. That's our state test that our EL students take every year to measure their growth in their language acquisition. Where our goal is always to get them to proficient or higher. And when they're practicing, applying the content that they learned and the knowledge to the test that they're taking for advanced or express, it's really helping them build those skills to apply it to the last things test as well. And we did see a lot of really great growth this year. We took that in January and February, and we have the results back, they're preliminary, but um, they do look really good. We've seen that growth. So so far for EL, the express component has been really helpful.
Megan, thank you. Just so, so you understand challenges and, and the growth they're making. What's the percentage of EL students over at, at Washington?
Forty, forty-four percent, I think.
Yeah, we have a hundred and forty-two on our case load, so.
To the forty percent, sorry, yeah. But the continuity between the classroom and the pullout has really helped tremendously. And so I took over in two thousand and seven. This is, we had the most students exit ever, over a hundred and forty-seven this year, K twelve. But a lot of fourth graders, we have a lot of work to do in K two, but third and fourth grade, we saw a lot of growth. So we're hoping that it reflects on SBA testing also, so we're keeping our fingers crossed.
Any anecdotal learning by the adult family members of the EL students? That like, is it helping them pick up? Yes, I've had families who have reached out. We use DoJell at Washington, which is great because it translates. And they have asked if student work has gone home, could they have more? Because they'll say, we're learning too, or I'm learning too, or I'd like to help. So at meetings too, different PPTs or, or parent meetings, they'll ask for things to be sent home. And so we'll do that quite often.
That was the answer I was hoping for.
Okay, thanks Megan.
I asked you to be here to represent building leadership. Come on up Maria. One of the things that I've worked on with the building leaders this year is a look for document. Benchmark currently provides one, but it is twenty-one pages long, so a little, a little, a little long for us. So with the building leadership, we condensed it to a two-page document that the building leaders are using to make sure that when they're walking into a classroom, they're seeing what they should be seeing on Benchmark. So Maria?
Yeah, great. Thank you. I do, our teachers have done a wonderful job of taking this brand new curriculum and implementing it, and we're really proud of them. Today, actually just today, Rich had come in and said, the academic language that he hears the students learn, using in their responses is just amazing. So we're really impressed with that. And another nice piece is when we go in from, to each room, it's very fluid. What's happening in one room, I see it in the next room. Or if I am done for that day and I can't get back in the following day when I go in, it's just a continuation of learning through fifth grade and sixth grade. So it's been really nice. And I just wanted to talk about the assessment data that we're getting. It's been really wonderful. So we, the Benchmark website gives up platform, thank you. It breaks up all of the scores and all of the data by standards that they're assessing. So we're able to really target what the student strengths are and what their areas of need are. And then it allows the teachers to go in and see what resources Benchmark's already providing that they can then use to reteach any concepts that the student didn't get in that previous unit. So it's been really wonderful for the teachers. We're really impressed with it.
These have, these folks have been the hardest working folks in the district, my reading consultants this year. So I certainly want to thank them.
So I'm Lauren, like the reading consultant at Carrigan. I, the, one of the biggest things that Maria kind of touched upon it is the Benchmark has created this, has fostered this sense of consistency across grade levels. So going into any classroom, they're teaching the same reading skill, same strategy with the same text. The text that the teachers are using is very diverse. It touches upon many different genres, poetry, informational texts, literary texts, and it's also very rigorous. So it's bringing that level of complexity even higher than we've had before. And not only has it created consistency across each grade level, that vertical alignment, I think is really going to, as we see the program progress throughout the years, is really going to be beneficial and show us great success. Especially after background knowledge is being built, and those alignment strategies, skills and strategies have been taught. And then also, the consumable materials, they're colorful, they're bright. The express, the steps to advance, everything, all those companion pieces all align, and it's very engaging for the students. And then last but not least, I need to acknowledge the work that the teachers have put in. Obviously, implementing a new program is not always the easiest, but they've all really stepped up to the challenge, and they've worked very, very hard. So after having a year under our belt, I think next year, it's going to be even more successful.
I'm Jessica Stepman, a reading consultant at Washington Elementary School. So I just wanted to talk consultant wise, as far as elementary. So one of the biggest things that I've noticed and enjoy about Benchmark is the consistency, which Lauren discussed. But the consistency between the schools. So us consultants, you know, we've worked together. I've been a consultant for quite a while now. And we work together, but it's always like, oh, they're doing that over there, and we're doing this over here. And it, it felt disconnected. But this, at this year, and I've told Dana many times, like, we feel so connected as a, as a district this year, because we're all doing the same thing. Our previous curriculum that we had was kind of a pull from all these different pieces. And it can be very overwhelming and, you know, using Google Drive, and where are we pulling this from, and where's this? And who's doing what, and what teachers have more in their belt than what, than other teachers? And this kind of pulls us all together. We're all doing the same thing. So I really like that consistency. And because of that, we also have a lot of kids in West Haven that bounce between schools. So at Washington especially, we've gotten kids come in and they just pick up right where they left off at seven, or wherever they came from. And I'm able to see their data immediately on the Benchmark platform. So it's, it's really nice when they come from within district, because we're all doing the same thing. They're not leaving one school where they were doing this and coming here. It's very consistent. Another huge benefit of Benchmark is for new teachers. When I started teaching, we had Scott Forsman, and, you know, people have their thoughts on Scott Forsman, but it was something in my hands that I was able to take home, and I knew exactly where everything was. I had mentioned it already that when we had our previous curriculum, it was kind of pulled from here. As a new teacher, that's so overwhelming with all the things you have on your plate, trying to figure out where this piece is and where that piece is, where Benchmark is all right there. It's, they're able to access it from home through Benchmark Universe. They're able to pull things. So it's a little less overwhelming for a new teacher. I mean, I think we're all overwhelmed this year because it's new to all of us. But as a new teacher coming in, being able to just have it right there, everything in one spot, all these materials already made for you, it's, it's been really nice. And because of that, we have the, Maria mentioned it, the consistency within the classrooms. And I find it comical when I leave one classroom and go to the next, and you mentioned it, they're saying the same thing. Like, I'm like, this is so weird to hear. And I mean, I think our teachers have always done a nice job of planning together and trying to stay on the same page, but this has really pulled it together. And because of that, Dana has even been able to come in and do model lessons herself, herself. She just comes into a room and is able to pick up where the teacher left off, which I think is incredible. Well, her doing a model lesson alone is just mind blowing to me, but.
Starting to like second.
And, and she's not an elementary person, and she's able to come in and do it because of that consistency and the structure of the program itself, so.
I apologize, my mother-in-law's in the emergency room. They're calling me, so, for my nursing opinion.
Before Margie starts, I also just did want to acknowledge Jackie Cincotta, who just did a ton of work this summer. And when I first found out I was switching positions, Colette said, talk to Jackie Cincotta to help you. So I definitely, she had a, sure, a few glasses of wine with my name on it this summer. So I did want to acknowledge all the work Jackie put in over the.
Well, first of all, I have to say, my heart couldn't be more full right now, listening, listening to the growth, listening to why everyone likes it, why you think it's working. That's what's supposed to happen. And I know it was a heavy lift, and all of the literacy consultants, all the teachers, Dana, all the leaders, Raf and Maya, you're all rock stars, because this was a big shift. But the, the proof is in the pudding. You're seeing what's working, and you're seeing what districts are seeing right now. And I think what you'll start seeing even more are your students getting, that are getting tier three support right now. You'll see them shifting and move from tier three to tier two. You'll see those students receiving tier two support and testing out, and you'll, they'll be in tier one. You know, the number of Ls that are proficient now, I mean, that is just fantastic. And part of that is because of the companion programs. They work together, the same knowledge strands, the same vocabulary, the same routines. And I think going forward, you're only going to see more growth. Your teachers are planning, and they're planning with integrity. And that is so different than just like teaching with efficacy, because they're taking it, they're making it their own, they're meeting their students where they are and providing those scaffolds. So as long as they continue planning and teaching with integrity, providing those scaffolds, you are going to see so much growth. I cannot wait to see what happens next year. As far as PD, I think we have done so much, and I think what we can do, you know, in year two, you know, do some more training for the admins. And we, Dana took, was telling us about the document that she took, and yes, it was long, it was twenty-one pages. But we wanted to make sure districts had everything they needed, and then they could pare it down to make it work for them, just like teachers are making the lessons work for them. We also can come in, now that we've done model lessons, we can come in and do some coaching with teachers and with the literacy consultants. And I think also now that year one's under the belt and teachers are, you know, providing all those scaffolds, one of the things that teachers are saying for the students or the classes rather, with high number of Ls in their classroom, I think we can do some more PD around that to help our classroom teachers support their Ls even more. But I want to say thank you for putting your trust in us. I know Neil and I had a conversation before the decision was even made. I'm like, I promise, we're here for the long haul. You will see growth with your kids, and I hope I upheld my side of the promise.
In fact, I will say that one of the things, you know, we met, you know, via Zoom and whatnot, several times throughout the course of the year. And I have to tell you, Margie definitely delivered on that. They've been with us ever since we made the decision, and they've been very, very helpful. Conducted the PD, listened to some of our concerns and made the adjustments when necessary. As far as that goes, they were as good as, as good as promised, and thank you so much.
You're welcome. And I did just want to give a shout, quick shout out to Dana, because she wasn't involved in the process. And she found out in June, like maybe the day before our admin trading, and she just jumped in. And, you know, the literacy staff, they were fabulous, and, you know, Jackie was in it from the very beginning, along with some of the other ladies. And you know what? We met the challenges, we pivoted, and now everyone's rocking and rolling.
Turns out EL is right. I really like this job.
Well, just the way you're talking about it, I don't know how you couldn't. So, so thank you to everyone.
Questions?
Good job.
Thank you to all the staff that spent their day here with us, with the students, and then came back tonight to spend their time here with us. I think it's great. And I, I like, I forget, I think it was Jess that said it was great for new teachers. I think that that's so important to be able to, maybe we'll attract more, even more teachers at that level by saying that we have this type of program that will really serve as kind of PD right within your, within your classroom.
Yeah, it's, it's really amazing to be able to hand brand new teachers a resource that's all encompassing. The joke used to be back in the day, and those of you who are old enough to remember the best program, the joke was they gave you your classroom keys and told you to do your best, and that was, that was teacher training back in the day. So it's, it's incredible to have something you could hand to a teacher, and it's the whole curriculum, all the resources, everything is there for you.
I just, I just want to add how impressive those numbers are, because numbers don't lie. I mean, that's, that's beyond impressive.
And that's halfway through, so we're excited to see what happens.
And Dana, can I add one thing? We, we love to celebrate all the success of our districts. So we are working with Dana and Neil and Judy and some of the teachers to write a success story about West Haven. So we can celebrate all the hard work that's going into what the teachers are doing and the growth that your students are making.
Jackie and I were featured on a podcast last week. If you want our autograph on the way out.
Everybody at this podcast.
It turns out anybody with a camera phone can do one, but whatever.
Thanks.
Sorry, apologies.
Perfect timing.
The nurse of the family. Yeah, she's, she's not, she has sepsis. No, she's got a fever, her ankle's swollen, she's got three. They're treating her. She's doing better. We were talking about sepsis before. Yeah. All right. Uh, I think we are at, did you have anything else, Neil? I'm sorry. I think we have board reports. I'll start. Get that in with Jonathan. Robert?
You reps touched on it, but obviously, your workshop, we're on another outstanding program. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, but between West Haven and Notre Dame Theater, I don't have to tell Kim. Something different about theater kids, I mean that very highly. Like, they take care of each other, they support each other's programs. They were here for the program here, they attended Notre Dame, the other program. Pass that down, just to show you the ad they tend to support one another. And, and you know, I will admit, the one thing I did pick up out of the budget hearing last week is the realization to cut one mil is four million dollars in today's money. I will admit, I did not realize, what it wasn't current money, but to, to change a budget or change by one mil, have to find four million dollars in small money, if you will.
Makes that excellent point, I can believe.
Next to impossible. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. I went to the play, opening night. My kids were involved in theater when they were here. I didn't have any sports people, just my daughter. My boys were not, but they did band and chorus, and they did theater. And this was amazing, and I'm so excited.
And this was amazing. And I'm so excited that the set people were our kids that did the sets. I'm happy that, because the goal was to have the kids do, become more involved in, in the new high school. And so I'm glad that that's a course, I'm hoping that we can do more courses with the makeup and getting a sewing teacher so we could design. That's, that's, that's my goal. I'm on the board for two, three years, two more years.
We are trying, you're just not there.
Anybody who's a sewing teacher, we want to hire a sewing teacher. Because I think I had Ms. Williams in ninth grade at Manley.
Styles.
Italian grandma, no. But.
Carrigan.
Mrs. Styles.
Sandy Styles.
Sandy Styles, yeah.
She was my teacher.
But I, I love the way it's now a community thing that, you know, there's, there's so many, so much involvement with the kids. And I do love the way Notre Dame and West Haven kids, they, they do support each other, it's great. And, but the play was outstanding, they did a great job and it was well-cast, it was well-timed, the costumes were great, everything was great, I had a great time at it. So thank you for letting us have that, those big presentations because I think it means a lot to the community. I'm all about sports and art, okay, arts, but I just want to say thank you to all of you.
Yeah, this presentation was spectacular, the, seeing the gains from just one year or not even a whole year of the program was, almost rendered me speechless, that never happens. For those of you that know me, I just, congratulations to all of you. And I can't even imagine what we're going to be hearing next year at this time after everyone is used to using the program. So we're super proud of all of you and all the hard work that went into this because it's not easy changing and adopting a new program and trying to almost unlearn everything you had already known about how you're teaching programs. But as a, as a very avid reader, this is really exciting to me because once you turn kids on to reading, like their, their world is limitless for them. So thank you so much. I heard the play was amazing, we had some illness in our house, so I did not come and spread it to the general public. You're very welcome. I think, I think the big thing I say all the time about kids that get up and perform, whether it's on the athletic field or on a stage or in a band or in a chorus, is that it's not just about performing the piece or playing in the game. It's about giving them the confidence to get up and stand up like in this role exactly and speak in front of people. Because it's not easy at all, even accomplished people that have multiple degrees to get up and stand and feel comfortable talking in front of people is a very hard thing to do. So I know our student refs are learning it here and the, the arts and sports coaches that we have that give the kids, these kids this opportunity. I was a dance kid and that's why I feel like, you know, I can sit up here and talk in front of you, I could sit up and talk in front of the city council. If the president wanted to hear from me, I have a lot of things to tell him as well. I would be absolutely no problem standing up and talking in front of those people and I learned that at DMS. So congratulations to all those kids, I heard it was an outstanding show, same with the kids at Notre Dame, I heard that was spectacular as well. I think that's it, I could probably say a hundred more things, but I won't in the interest of time and all of you getting home to your dinners. So next on our agenda is approval of minutes, D1, the minutes from the March seventeenth meeting. I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Rosa, second by Bob, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, I will entertain a motion for D2, twenty-five dash fifteen and twenty-five dash sixteen, all-inclusive. Motion, motion by Pat, second by Rosa, any discussion?
Just like to wish them both well. And I know there won't be the time to say something later into the, who are informational, welcome and hopefully they're both going to be here and do good things for us.
Thank you, Bob. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, D3, twenty-five dash seventeen, twenty-five dash eighteen and twenty-five dash nineteen, I'll entertain a motion for all-inclusive. Motion by Heather, second by Kim, any discussion?
Just I wanted to point out, good job by Rafaela, we've secured two science teachers for me to get next year, that's, that's a big deal. All right, we've got a couple to go.
You always say, "I'm done," and then something happens.
Also happy to see nurse, nurse positions filled as well.
Yeah, I thought we had two filled, but I, one may have backed out. So but we're, I believe we have fourteen of the fifteen jobs that we have budgeted for and filled.
Excellent, all in, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, the rest of the agenda is informational. However, I will congratulate Sherri Lepper, who's been a longtime city employee, on moving over to the good side, I'm only kidding. Moving over to the better side.
Here's even the better news, we finally got somebody from Milford, they've taken a lot of our employees.
And congratulations to Rob, I don't know if he's still here, he's back.
Thank you so much for coming and taking the pictures and, yeah, welcome home, exactly.
Wait, he was in Milford? No, no, he's, he's in Westy, he's going out.
No, I'm saying, we've lost several employees to Milford, we finally got one back.
Oh, nice.
We still want from them.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven seventeen. All right. Everyone's in favor.